All right, I am calling to order the regular meeting on April 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County. Welcome. I will ask the clerk to establish a quorum, please.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Good morning.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairwoman Teans.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Next, we need to approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from any of the board members?
No, ma'am.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
From Mr. Blakemore? Do I have a second?
Second.
From Mr. Hart? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? The minutes are approved from the last meeting. Thank you.
No, the agenda.
I'm sorry, the agenda. Now, we're going to do the minutes for the last meeting. The board received the minutes ahead of time to review from March 6th, 2025, 6:00 PM meeting. Does anyone have any changes to those minutes from the meeting in March? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Askew. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Is there any discussion about the minutes?
No.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's an unanimous approval of the minutes from the March 6th meeting. Thank you all. Next, we have a proclamation for Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I have four of our esteemed colleagues that are here today, and I would like to read their names, and I would like to invite them up along with their manager and director. First of all, we have Rebecca Pope, Holly Ramos, Scott Wooton, Lisa Press, and if Curtis Creakmore would come up, please. I would like to read the proclamation. Just stay right there, and then we're going to have you come in front. We're going to all take a picture together, okay? So, let me read this for you guys today. We're very proud of all of you for working to work for Walker County. It means a lot to me personally as a resident, so thank you for all that you do. And this is for you. By the Walker County Board of Commissioners, Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics in order to protect life and preserve property. And whereas, the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Walker County Emergency 911 Center. And whereas, public safety communicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety communicators provide a vital link for our law enforcement officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, by radio equipping them with information and ensuring their safety as well. And whereas, Walker County's public safety communicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suspension of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, such dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, I, Angela Teams, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through the 19th, 2025, to be Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Walker County, in honor of the women and men whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Thank you very, very much. Let's have a picture.
And run it through your hands. Thank you. I left one, or I did two. You're a special.
We won't say one.
We will. How are you?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't know. If I wanted to. Okay. We'll get a certification. We need a little tighter for you. Okay. There we go. We're so proud of y'all.
You can't see one.
You can.
Thank you all very, very much. Appreciate y'all. Thank you. Okay. Now, we come to my report, which is shorter than last week. I know y'all will be happy about that, or last month, rather. It is short and sweet. Make sure I read it correctly. I'll provide some information about the ways that my staff is still bringing value to the bottom line, and our quarterly financial status, and plans for future actions that our office will be taking. We have successfully contained and continue to look for ways to keep our operation efficient and sustainable. Previously, I estimated that a rental agreement with some state government partner would be bringing in additional $300 annual rental fee. However, we renegotiated that deal, and now we'll be bringing in $427,000 in additional rental income. That exceeded our initial expectations. The team and I are actively reviewing a long list of properties and identifying vacant lots and buildings that can be sold. This is a part of our ongoing effort to better utilize our assets and to streamline operations. And, as mentioned in March, we are talking with banking institutions to explore better rates and investment opportunities for the millions of dollars that we control every day and every year. This will help maximize financial effectiveness and improve our financial and fiscal standing. And lastly, approximately $10,000 annual savings was found in renegotiating an insurance premium and canceling two phone lines that weren't needed. So, we're looking for the small stuff as well as the big stuff. As you know, our current budget year begins on October 1st, 2024, and it ends on September 30th, 2025. We are now entering the seventh month of our fiscal year and into the third quarter. A roadmap has already been laid out detailing the expectations of expenditures and capital and splosh expenses. The department heads and I are meeting now to prepare for the budget for the commissioners to review in May. For the first-time quarterly report, I'll be providing tonight an overview verbally, since we do not have an easy-to-reformat for you just yet, but we hope to have that, will have that on the July 10th board meeting, that's the next quarter, end of the quarter. So, for tonight, I'll tell you that budget overview from October 1st of 2024 to March 31st, 2025, we are on track with our planned expenditures. The total revenue, including splosh, was $48,446,386. We received the majority of our income during October and December and January based on property taxes that come in on those months. But we do receive general revenue from other resources every month, and that will be detailed in July. The current balance in the general fund is a fluctuating $20.5 million, and the splosh balance is $8.1 million. It is my estimate that in the last seven months, it has cost us $2.4 million each month to operate the county. I do not know that that's a trend. I will only know a normal monthly activity after the full year is over. There are some variances in this budget, and we will talk about that in the budget meeting later today, or later this evening. Forecast: Splosh is anticipated to outperform the 2020 estimates through the life of December 2026. Splosh funds are deposited from the state each month. However, we will not be spending any money on any projects until we have the full amount of that project in the bank. We are monitoring monthly revenue from all sources to understand what is the monthly trend. As I stated before, it'll take about a year before I can fully see a picture of what it takes to run this county. And as my team continues to reduce the overall overhead, that will change every month. We are working on making the financials more accessible, and I'm pleased to inform you that more detailed quarterly reports are coming, so be prepared for that on July 10th, as I stated before. Looking ahead, we are planning on mailing a survey to sample residents across the county. It will be a computer-generated sample list. Because we have 70,000 people who live in this county, we cannot send a letter to all of them, so we hope to capture a great majority of the residents. What we're trying to do is to better understand how we perform, and more importantly, to gain insight into the needs of our community. By listening directly to the people that we serve, we can better assess their priorities and continue to make informed decisions as a board. So, thank you very much for listening to my report. All right, now we have some committee reports, and I believe is Payne Gilli here? Did he come tonight? Hi, Payne. Would you come up and talk first for the litter and your landfill processes that are new to us, please? Mr. Payne Gilli is our Director of Sanitation and Economic... No, I can't say it. What is it?
Solid Waste and Environmental Management.
That's it. Thank you. Solid Waste and Environmental Management.
That's all right.
Thank you.
We're good. So, to let everybody know, we had our first litter task force committee meeting on March 17th, and we had a good turnout, about a dozen folks showed up, and we appreciate the participation in that meeting. It was a chance for us to get to know one another and to pitch ideas off of each other and to brainstorm on some directions to move forward. And we came up with some items that have actually already taken place in coordinating work with the road department, Bobby and Carlin. We've already put up signs to all the major accesses to the landfill. And following that meeting, about a week after that meeting, I'd like to mention Tina Gross gathered a group of participants together and helped to pick up along Marble Top and Kendrick's Witch and Garrett's Chapel, but I'll let her talk about that. And we're planning to pass out notices to our customers during the month of April that kind of lets them know that we're taking this seriously and that the county codes department, through John Purcell and the compliance officer, Alex, and Commissioner, we've worked together to develop our street, or make sure that our ordinances were in line with the state ordinance. And during the month of April, we're going to pass out some notices to all of our customers, informing them that as of, you know, May 1st, that there will actually be some citations or possibly tickets issued for untarped loads or unsecured loads. I actually have that statement here, if you'd like me to read it.
Sure.
Okay. It says, "Please be advised that both the State of Georgia and Walker County have a secured load ordinance in effect. Please see OCGA 40-6-254, OCGA 40-6-248.1, and County Section 29.509. All loads transported to this landfill must be properly secured to prevent litter and debris from falling onto the roadways. Failure to comply may result in fines or penalties as authorized by OCGA 16-7-43. Walker County will be providing warnings to anyone not in compliance with these regulations during the month of April. Starting May 1st, 2025, Walker County will be enforcing the secured load ordinance and issuing citations to anyone not in compliance. Thank you for your cooperation in keeping our community clean and safe."
So, we're giving everyone basically a month to get in compliance with... We're used to coming to the landfill with our covered or secured loads. Right. Yeah.
And we've actually had a sign up at the scale house for about a month, giving a lot of people notice that this is going to take place.
Thank you.
Okay.
To the board, does the board have any questions for Mr. Gilli?
Very good.
Thank you, Payne.
Okay. Thank you.
We do not have any department reports tonight, so we will move on to the presentation. I would invite the Rushton LLC auditing firm to the podium, please. They will be giving us a fiscal report of our audit, and it was a very thorough audit from what I understand, so we look forward to hearing what you... Yes, you've given us all of our packets, so thank you. Please tell us who you are.
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman Teams. My name is Julie George. I'm the Audit Manager on the engagement for the Walker County Board of Commissioners. My colleague, Audit Partner Clay Pilgrim, is here as well. And as she said, we're here today to present the annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2024. That was due to the state by the end of March, and everything was timely completed and filed. And I wanted to just take a moment to let you know what we are providing you today. You've got a bound annual financial report. This is a full set of financial statements for all the county's funds and activities, including notes, as well as our reports. And then we have also issued two letters. One letter, you'll notice it has significant audit matters on the first page. That is a letter summarizing certain communications that we are required to make to you as the Walker County Board of Commissioners, so just wanted to point that letter out. And then we've got a second letter. You'll notice that it has numbered bullet points at the bottom of it, and those are what we call management points or recommendations for things that different departments or constitutional offices or the county would want to look into implemented. And we have discussed those with finance, with the appropriate constitutional offices. And I also want to say thank you to finance. Thank you to Greg and Angela and their team, and thank you to everyone that we work with at Walker County. We certainly couldn't do what we do without their assistance. And because you are a county, we work with a lot of different people here. We visit each of your constitutional offices. We visit multiple departments, and we, like I said, they're always attentive to our needs, to our questions, and we appreciate that very much. The last item that you have is a bound color presentation, and this is where we're going to spend our time this evening. Now, I'm more than happy to talk about anything that you would like to, but this is a much more condensed version than that large bound report you have in front of you. So, it will touch on some highlights of the financial statements for the year ended September 30, 2024. So, that first slide covers the audit opinion. That audit opinion is on pages 1 through 3 of that bound financial report. It's very comparable to what you've seen in the past, but I did want to mention that we issued what we call an unmodified opinion on the county's financial statements. That means that in our opinion, based on our audit, we believe those financial statements do present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the county as of September 30, 2024, and the respective changes in financial position and cash flows where applicable for that fiscal year then ended. Couple other things mentioned in that audit opinion. We perform our audit in accordance with both auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also government auditing standards, which are issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. That letter's three pages long, but just to highlight a couple other key points within that letter, the financial statements are the responsibility of Walker County's management. As your independent auditors, it's our responsibility to express our opinion on those financial statements. And you may also hear that called a clean opinion. When I say unmodified, that means that we did not have to modify our report, so that allows you, as the board, to take that report and this bound financial statement and understand that you can place reliance on those financial statements based on our audit. The next slide is about the... Well, I skipped a slide. I apologize. The government-wide statements is the slide that we'll be looking at next. One thing I wanted to point out with the government-wide statements, those start on page 15. These are different from what you are accustomed to seeing on a month-to-month basis. You only see these statements annually in this annual financial report, and I wanted to point out what those are and how that's different from what you usually see. If you look at page 15 and 16 of that bound report, and you're welcome to jot those page numbers down if you would rather not actually open that up, but there is a statement of net position, and that lists the county's assets, liabilities, and net position as of 9/30/2024. And this includes the county as a whole. It includes a column for the governmental activities and the business-type activities. So, that is going to be your governmental activities, going to be your splosh, your general fund, your T-splosh funds, all combined. And then your business-type activities would be your landfill and the Mountain Cove farms combined. And typically, when you're looking at financials on a month-to-month basis, you're probably seeing each fund separate. So, that's why I wanted to point out that you only see this presentation as a whole on an annual basis. So, this would present all of the county's assets and liabilities and show the residual net position. On page 17, this is also presenting the county as a whole. This presents the results of operations for the county. So, here you'll see the county's revenues and expenses for the year. And again, this is the county as a whole on the full accrual basis of accounting, so it's going to be more information combined than what you usually look at month-to-month. The next slide will touch on the government-wide net position. I do want to point out, the last three fiscal years, there was an excess of revenues over expenditures, so that allowed the county to increase its net position each year of the last three years. And the county ended, and you'll see this on page 17 of the bound report, ended 9/30/24 with a total net position of right under $174 million. And as you'll see on that slide, I mean, that's up from 2022's amount of $141, and the county's been able to do that by its revenues exceeding its expenditures over the last few years. You'll notice that the net position is broken down into different components on this slide. Wanted to touch base just a moment to let you know what those are. You've got the net investment in capital assets. That is the net amount that Walker has spent on equipment, infrastructure, buildings, basically all your capital assets, vehicles, equipment, net of the accumulated depreciation to date, and net of any debt that is due on those assets. And you'll see, again, that number has increased over the past few years, so it's obvious that Walker has invested... The net amount has increased $20 million since 2022. So, you can see there your investment in the county's capital assets. Then you have that restricted net position. That is going to consist of any funds that are restricted for purpose. That would include your splosh, your T-splosh, your development authority is included there because they're restricted for economic development, your ARPA money, your fire and rescue money, any settlement funds from opioid. There's multiple separate funds outside of the general fund that make up that restricted net position. And then you've got your unrestricted net position, and you'll also see that it's also up from two years ago, from 2022 to 2024, up from $31 to $41 million. And that is not restricted as to purpose, so that would be the net position that is available without restriction. See, the next slide addresses the general fund. This is probably the fund you pay most attention to because that's your operating fund for the county, and this is probably the financial statements that you are looking at along with your budget on a month-to-month basis. So, definitely wanted to spend some time on the general fund. That starts on page 18 in that bound report, and we do present a general fund balance sheet, which includes the assets and liabilities and fund balance of the general fund. And then also, starting on page 21, the county is presenting the revenues and expenditures of the general fund. I'll have just a few comments on the slide here, basically explaining any significant variances over the prior year. And you'll notice that revenues were a decrease of about $675,000. Local option sales tax, insurance premium tax, and other income were up. You'll notice that property taxes were down. I wanted to point out that that is primarily due to the timing of receipt. So, the general fund has what Gadsby calls a 60-day availability period, so that means you're only recognizing taxes in the general fund that either come in during the year or come in within 60 days after year-end. And that amount that comes in within 60 days after year-end just happened to be higher at 9/30/24 than it was at 9/30/23. So, that is primarily the difference in that property tax decrease. If you were to go back and look at the statement of activities, which doesn't have an availability period required, you'll see that those taxes are more comparable from '23 to '24. Expenditures were up about 4%. Got a few notes on here about some of the larger increases. District Attorney, there were some supplements added to the ADAs. Jail operations, there were some additional employees. And then highways and streets, there were also some additional employees. So, that's why you see those increases there. And general government buildings and plant were down just due to repairs and maintenance being down over the prior year. On the next slide, we've got some of the totals of revenues and expenditures over the last three fiscal years, so I wanted to take a look at that with you. And again, the FY '24, you'll see those changes are relative to the changes that we discussed on the previous slide, but this does show, if you look at the revenues, which is... Sorry, I've got two here, and I can't remember what color that is. It's the blue line. So, if you look at the blue line, that's the county's revenues over the last few years. And if you look at the green line, the green line represents the county's expenditures over the last three years. Okay. The next slide, we have put together a slide about the landfill. And again, it's a comparative for the last three fiscal years as well. The blue line are the revenues over the last three years, and the operating expenses are the yellow line over the last three years. And the detail for those numbers for FY '24 are on page 30. And then I wanted to touch base just very briefly on your splosh and T-splosh schedules. Those are on pages 107 to 110. And then we have summarized a couple of things on each one. So, we've got your splosh 2013 and 2020 referendum, and you spent about $1 million out of the 2013, about $8.2 million out of the 2020, and of course, the 2020 is still paying over because that's the current referendum where sales tax is being collected. It's still paying over money to the cities, and that was about $3 million. The splosh 2013 money, of course, has already been collected, but there is still funds there that Walker County is spending. Similar to the splosh, we've got a 2017 and 2023 T-splosh issue. Again, that 2017 has been collected, but there are still funds left, and some of those were expended during the year, about $187,000. And then the 2023, which is the current T-splosh that's being collected, about $4.4 million expended. And there is a detail, as required by the state, as I said on pages 107 through 110, where you can actually see the amount spent on each splosh and T-splosh project. Okay, moving along to the next slide. Wanted to mention, there's a couple other reports in here. We talked about the... And then the 2023, which is the current T-SPOST that's being collected, about 4.4 million expended. And there is a detail, as required by the state, as I said on pages 107 through 110, where you can actually see the amount spent on each SPOST and T-SPOST project. Okay, moving along to the next slide. Wanted to mention, there's a couple other reports in here. We talked about the report on the financial statements. We also, because we perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we also have an additional report, starting on page 96. And that is where we have considered the county's internal controls and compliance as part of planning our audit. We don't actually provide a compliance or an opinion on that testing, but we do, of course, bring to your attention anything that comes to our attention that we think is significant. And the county did not have any material weaknesses in financial reporting come to our attention. We did note two significant deficiencies, and those are included. Let me give you a page number for those. Those are on pages 105. So that report on page 96, 97 references those. Those are on page 105. And then we've got one other report within this large bound report. And this is relative to the county's federal awards. So because Walker County received and expended over 750,000 in federal awards during the year ended 9/30/24, we are also required to perform what we call a single audit or an audit in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. And that report is on page 98. We did not note any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies when we looked at your internal controls and compliance on federal awards. Got a couple slides following that, just discussing changes with Gatsby this year and also what will be coming up next year. So that first change is Gatsby 100, and it's called Accounting Changes and Error Corrections. We do have a footnote included in the annual financial report that the county did implement that for 9/30/2024. I do want to point out that the county did not have any error corrections, but we did have to implement that report so that the county, if it did have some, would be reporting in accordance with the current Gatsby. And then coming up next, on that next slide, we've got Gatsby 101 coming up. And that standard is going to be on compensated absences. So that standard is going to change the way that governments and Walker County report compensated absences. So that would include your sick time, that would include your vacation time, any paid time off will be considered under this new standard. And we will be working with finance ahead of time and HR. We've actually already included them in a webinar recently that we're doing to assist our clients with the implementation of that Gatsby 101 that's coming up. Okay, the next slide is our contact information. I know that's a lot of information that you've just been given tonight and a very condensed presentation considering how much content is included, but I would encourage you to reach out to myself or Clay as you look this over. If you have any questions, we're available whether we're here or not. At any time, please reach out. And I'm happy to spend additional time on anything that you would like or answer any questions at this time, if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lee?
So I asked Clay this last year, and he wasn't answering me.
Is that why he put me up here?
So you guys do a lot of counties.
We do, we do, we do a lot of counties.
I asked him to give me a grade on a scale of 1 to 10, but I can't do that. But are we good, better, best? I mean, how did it all look, just in layman's terms? Is it in good condition?
You didn't calculate general fund balance, did you? You thought? I was, one thing that we do to measure, let me see if I can take a look at that. One thing that we do to measure, I would say, the health of government sometimes is look at how much fund balance they have at the end of their fiscal year. Now, one thing to keep in mind, you know, when looking at Walker County is you're a 9/30 fiscal year end, so you do have, that's right, that's probably your healthiest time of year from the standpoint of you've just billed or are about to bill property taxes. So I was just going to take a look and see. Good, good. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to share that because that's usually something that boards and finance directors are interested in. And like I said, I knew that it was healthy because we do assess that, but I didn't have the number in front of me.
About 86%, 10 months.
Okay, so what you just calculated was looking at your fund balance. You've got enough unrestricted money in the general fund that you could operate for about 10 months without revenues coming in. So that's a very healthy place to be. You know, I always think anywhere around six months is probably healthy, but that is very dependent upon other things, like how much debt do you have? You know, what are your plans for the future? Like Chairwoman Teems mentioned, trying to get a handle on what does it take to run the county? So, you know, you may see that go up. It's just something you'd want to keep an eye on. And what kind of capital projects do you have? You know, what are the, you really just need to know what are your plans for that fund balance if it continues to go up. But it's healthy, but not too much. That's another question we get sometimes. So I just think that's a good, a good measurement point. And also, the general fund does have some other funds, of course, that it has to help out. You know, as you know, there are some transfers to other funds that maybe can't make it without the general fund help. So that's something else you'd want to keep in mind when you're assessing, you know, how much fund balance do you need.
Yeah, I'll mention to you that, that, when you look at that graph, so that chart that's got those expenditures and other financing uses and all, it looks like a huge increase in the expenditures. A large part of that is a transfer out, as she's mentioning, and that's due to the defeasance of the debt. There was one final bond that was paid off during the year. So that transfer out to defees those bonds is there as well. So that makes that expenditure number look like it's shooting way up, but it's actually a good thing. It's not, I mean, you're defeating some bonds there. Or defees is a term there for, you're paying it off in advance of when you can, so it has to be put, set aside in the escrow account and paid off over time, so.
And that's another very positive point. I mean, you've got 10 months left after you paid off, how much debt?
I think it's 10 million.
About 10 million dollars worth of debt in 9/30/2024.
We're around 10 months. We have till September, right?
Well, you're saying that 10 months of fund balance. Did we calculate it?
Yeah, that was as of September 30, 2024. So if revenues, I always just say, if revenues stop coming in on 10-1 and your expenditures remain consistent, the county could operate for 10 months off the money that it has.
Right, it's good to know. Did you have any questions, Mr. Lee?
That's, I just make sure I understood what he said. So where these graphs where it shows more expenditures than money coming in, that is because you?
It's largely, 10 million dollars of that and that's a rounded number.
I saw that a couple places, but that's probably.
That's a large reason for that increase in the cost.
So my question is that the, as we look at how to invest this money, so it just doesn't sit there and do nothing for us, are you guys available for questions on what is a legal investment and things like that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work.
Anything at all, in the interim, reach out. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the thorough report. Okay, we'll move on to our next thing, which is the update on the pension plan for the employees. If Ms., Judge Chrissy Anderson will please approach the podium of it. You don't hear that a lot, do you?
I usually tell you to come.
Please tell us the update for the pension plan.
Okay. Well, I would love to come here tonight to say I'm ready to present to you something that I want you to look at and to sign and approve to remove the freeze and get our pension to where it needs to be. But I'm not going to do that tonight. And it's not, it's not bad. Please don't think it's bad, and it has nothing to do with anything that is here. It's just, when I started this back, I think in 2021, going on this and going with it, I was determined that whatever we could come up with or whatever we were able to do, it was going to be done right. It was, the participants were going to be taken care of, and they were going to get exactly what they were supposed to have. The county, if I'm going to present something to you for you to sign, I want it to be correct. So we still have a few little hiccups, but they're good hiccups because there's some of the things that we were not really looking at. I know that when we did the study, the first study that we did, we only included the active employees and then the vested terminated employees. So a, so it came up that, that we couldn't include those certain people. It could only be the active. So I reached out, got permission. I reached out to our legal counsel to get a legal opinion on that. And actually, the legal opinion says, well, not just those, but you have to include the active, the vested terminated, and those drawing. So there, we've made sure we are, got everybody, and our bases are on there. So we had a new study done, and our new study came up, but that is based on January 1 of 2024. Okay? So we're going to amend this plan. We can't amend a plan in a different year. So if those figures were 1-1 of '24, well, we're not amending it to 1-1 '25. So we had to back off for a minute because I was hoping we were doing this in January, but had to back off. But I am on the phone, told Mr. Mayfield, he's just going to put me on his payroll there because we're on the phone, you know, sometimes two and three hours several times a week. You graciously allowed me to reach out or have Mr. Mayfield reach out to get a pension specialist in so that our wording is correct. We don't have wording in there that meant something different on there. We, I think you presented last time the different changes that we're doing. Those are just about ready. The only thing we're waiting on is a data analysis that they're going all the way back to when the freeze happened, and they are making sure, and I'm so appreciative of them doing this, but they are going back and they are verifying every employee's, whatever their salary was at each time, and figuring it exactly. So as soon as we can get that, which Kevin said possibly two weeks, three weeks, it just depends, because we kind of had a little hiccup on some information from our CFO, from that part of it, getting the numbers in. And it was a great question that they had, you know, is okay, the plan says the compensation is based on this, this, and this. Well, there were some questions about what, what considered was compensation? Do we give them time that they had to be off? Is that included in that? Or do we go? So we are making sure every I is dotted and every T is crossed before I ever bring it to y'all, but I am, I'm close. And that light is right there, and I keep thinking, please don't go out. Please don't burn out. We're here. But we are very close to getting this done. And when we do, I'm going to have Buck or Gallagher now come and give y'all a presentation on, you know, our numbers, where we are. And then once we get that, because basically, we probably could bring it to you now, but then if we're not basing it on the right numbers, I'm going to tell you wrong information. I'm not going to do that. We did have a meeting on March 20th with the participants. Our two new trustees came in, and they're very excited. They're very ready to go with this. We're ready to start forward to make sure everything is where it needs to be. And I will just have to say thank y'all because I have not had a meeting with that many people who left with smiles and laughing and going, so that was wonderful. And, you know, it, I could not do that without your support, and y'all have been great to help me on that. So I'm hoping next time, if we don't have it sooner, but as soon as I do, I'll let y'all know. Do y'all have any questions for me?
We appreciate your diligence.
Appreciate all your hard work.
41 people appreciate you too.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all.
Thank you for being here tonight too, updating us. Okay, we'll move forward with the public hearing, the planning and zoning portion of our meeting. I will read the first one for you. There's a small thing that we wanted to clarify for the audience. Per Walker County Code, Chapter 22-109(c), all comments concerning a proposed zoning decision under consideration by the Board of Commissioners shall be in writing prior to the commencement of the hearing. The only exception would be the applicant who has filed the zoning request. The applicant shall have five minutes to address the board unless the board allows additional time. So the first one is Raymond Keith Murdoch. Is anyone here from the Murdoch family that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay. He requests a variance for less than five acres in an A1 agriculture zone for property located at 643 Kensington Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707. Tax map and parcel number 0-282-009. The Planning Commission initially recommended this variance be denied. The second one is Michael Letson. Is there anyone from Michael Letson's team here? Hi, are you Mr. Letson? It's nice to meet you. Would you like to speak to the board? You can stand up if you will, and please say your name for the record, please.
Michael Watson.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, you know, subdivide, and I talked to them in the first, in the first meeting I went to, and they said that I could do that as long as I did a full acre instead of a half acre, and I agreed to do that. But then they denied it, so that's why I'm here, you know? Because there's another home on the property, and I just, I want to be able to sell that home so that, you know, I can get my payment down for my farm to be able, you know, to afford everything.
The way it works is that we read these first, and then at the end of the meeting, we vote on these. So it does take a bit of time, so if you can hang around, that'd be great, but you don't have to, but it'd be great if you could.
No, I will.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Letson. The third one is Safe Future Real Estate Investments. Is there anyone here from Safe Future Real Estate Investments to speak? They requested three lot size variances for property located at 20 and 36 and 86 Braxton Lane, Rossville, Georgia, 30741. Their initial request from the planning board, or by the, I'm sorry, the initial, I'm sorry, let me start over. The decision from the Planning Commission. The, I apologize, yes, the recommendation was to deny this as well. So we will hear all, we'll decide on all three of these at the end of this meeting. All right, now we'll move on to our section where it's public comment. And I just would like to remind everyone that we do require order and respect for the board. And if anyone gets out of order, I will have to have you removed, and I will not hesitate to do so. And I could also have anyone banned from speaking. And I will make sure that this is noted in our records, so this is the debarment rule of this commission. I will open up the public speaking, and who would like to go first?
Jackie Hudson, how are you?
Hello.
We'll go on the basis of transparency, accountability, and truth, Chairwoman. And, you know, beginning with is this current resolution you read back in 2005. So you're deciding to enforce a resolution to not have public comment on a zoning change. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
What you just read on the resolution?
I didn't read a resolution.
You just read one. The county code, I didn't quote the number.
Yeah.
So that's back in 2005. So, so the clarification, so public cannot speak on behalf of a zoning change?
At this commission, that's right.
What, just this one meeting or all of them?
To this board. You, public speaking, public comments are allowed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, not at this hearing.
Well, they're not the decision makers, okay? It's been proven, the authority's been taken away from them. So, so decision-making on planning and zoning is here at the commission meeting. And it was a resolution in 2005 when that was made, so it's been, what, 16 years? How many, nine years? What years? 19, 20 years. It's not been enforced. Have you checked, you're legal to see if that's, can legally be enforced or not? So, you know, on the fact of transparency, accountability, and truth, all of a sudden we're making another decision to reduce public involvement because I've seen positives and negatives of ideas, comments, things in the past. because I've seen positives and negatives of ideas, comments, things in the past on the zoning change, okay? Or proposed zoning change. Some have been negative, some have been to protect our agriculture district, protect children, kids, churches, families around liquor stores. I've seen some ideas that come out from the public. But to get back to the transparency part of these things is, I don't see how that's opening involvement for the last year. That's what we heard. And now, all of a sudden, an old, old, old policy or resolution is just now being enforced to not hear the public. So, it's interesting to me. So, maybe you should check with legal, see if that's enforceable after so long it's not been enforced. But again, just to understand why the lack of public involvement when, you know, people have concerns, people have ideas, and it's limited it down more to five folks and maybe just notifying border properties, which have been done in the past. So, just curious why this all of a sudden is being enforced?
Well, just because it's never been enforced doesn't make it wrong. It's the right thing to do. And we did get legal's opinion. So, I got our outside counsel's opinion about this.
Okay, so you think less public involvement, transparency is better?
I think running an efficient business meeting is what's effective.
So, no ideas, no comments, no concerns of people in the region, in the area?
Yes, we can comment at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
That's not where the vote happens. It's the authority being given back to the planning and zoning.
Okay. Thank you for your comment.
Now, that was transparency, just wanted to know. Okay, so again, last, we've seen a lot of things, you know. One thing that might be respectful to the public and to the presenters, just like the audit, audit's pretty detailed. This audit is more general than a forensic audit, which is another promise during the campaign. But in any presentation, a screen, show them the pages. We went to the slide after slide after slide. So, is this the first whole board has seen the audit? If it is, why is the presenter not going through these things when the public can see that if we're still allowed to see that? Can we not invest in a projector to be looking at these details with a presenter in this room? So, maybe a venue change to have some more transparency in presentations where we can understand what's going on?
I agree with that, yes. And I will say that the audit will be available to the public tomorrow by the end of the business day.
Okay, good, good. So, we might go to a larger room with a screen. So, anyway, that's pretty much what I have. And again, just again, this transparency and accountability, it seems like we reduced it from going to one meeting per month, public involvement, to now this, oh, no public involvement on zoning. And even years past.
Your time is up, thank you.
We would have State of the County every month on TV.
Thank you, Mr. Holstein. Would anyone else like to speak in public comment section, please? Remember to state your name for us.
I'll follow that, thank you. Tina Gross, I'm here to operate, I'm here to represent Operation Outreach. And first of all, following that, I would like to thank my Board of Commissioners for your positivity and your transparency on behalf of our Board of Commissioners. I appreciate that very much. So, on March 22, we had our very first litter detail. And my brother Randy Pittman and the Walker County, Georgia Media Group, combined with Atlas Bolt Nut, our Board of Commissioners, our Sheriff's Department, and our awesome, amazing Payne from our landfill, we merged together. And Robbie Tate from Lafayette Police Department, he took a team to Foster Mill Road. And the rest of us worked a mile and a half to two miles radius out from the landfill. And unbelievably, we picked up one ton, 330 pounds of litter within a two. Within a, I'm not going to say I wasn't sore the next day, within a two-hour period of time. Our Madam Chairlady and Mr. Askew, my husband and a buddy drove, they worked their tails off. The rest of us, we hit the roads with trash bags. It was amazing. So, I guess what I'm trying, in a nutshell, what I'm saying is, there's more to living in Walker County than paying taxes. We have such a beautiful community. We have so many things here. I don't care if you lived here for a little while or a long while. Maybe consider donating two hours a time, you know, once a quarter when we venture out and do these litter details. It's a great thing to give back to our community. Our community has a ton to offer. I just encourage each of you to plug in, whether it's your church, whether it's Planning and Code meetings, whether it's the VOC meetings, whether it's the litter detail. Just get plugged into our community and give something back because we do have awesome, I mean, we have one of the greatest counties and communities in the entire state of Georgia. And I'm just, I'm thankful to be here. I'm thankful for you all.
Well, thank you for your hard work too.
My pleasure.
Thank you for being out there volunteering.
Thank you for you.
You're welcome. Anybody else that would like to speak during public comment section? Remember to tell us your name, please.
Good evening, I'm Ed Yates. I was going to be very complimentary, but after hearing what I've heard, apparently, I didn't do a very good job of reading. You know, the code that you have repeated about the Planning Commission and to this commission, apparently to both, anything you have to do about zoning, no matter what kind of input it might be, has to be done in writing. That's great if most of these people in the citizens, the citizens of Walker County don't have secretaries. They are vocal people. They're not letter writers, they're not pencil pushing geeks. They're working. They need, you know, we need, particularly, Madam Chairman, you've ran on truth, transparency, and accountability. Well, you've got less transparency because you're restricting things. I was going to be positive, but I can't be. This is ridiculous. Truth, what's the truth? You know, apparently, y'all may not know sometimes. You know, I was anxiously awaiting a motion from one and a second to overturn this 20-year-old ordinance or whatever you want to call it. I'm not an attorney. You know, that's what I wanted to see. I wanted to see unanimous vote to overturn it. I was encouraged. I'm now not. You know, like I said, we are a vocal population. We're not a bunch of letter writers. Miss Teams, you may be, with your background, you may be. I'm certainly not. I went to an engineering school. We don't write jack. You just, there's a drawing, look at it, it's done. It's real simple. You know, if it's a chemical analysis, it's done. You know, I wanted to see who was, you know, I thought maybe I had misspoken in calling y'all potentially scallywags. Well, if you don't, if you don't change this ordinance, you are.
Agreed. Mr. Yates, your time is up. We're not going to listen to this.
That's interesting.
Sorry.
That's it, we're transparent as hell. We'd watch your mouth in open meetings, sir.
Yes, please, please, I said that we're going to have decorum with respect.
You watch, Amy.
No, 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 we will not do it anymore. We are moving on now. Does anyone else want to speak during the public?
If you're going to keep mouthing off, say it where I can hear you. That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Askew, please. Do you want me having him removed?
No, I just asked what he was saying, that's all I asked.
All right. Does anyone else want to speak during the public meeting? Please come up. Please remind us your name, please.
My name's Randy Pittman and I'm part of the Walker County Chamber 2025, 2020, 2024, 2025 Leadership Team, along with my colleague Travis Middleton. And we got a, and during this team training, we're supposed to do a project for the community. Well, we've seen a need at Ridgeland High School. And for our project, we're going to sponsor a senior. And I'll read the flyer the principal put out. Dress for success. Sponsor graduate, graduating senior of Ridgeland High School. Help a senior purchase a cap, a gown, dress attire, or both. This is tax deductible, cash or check. Donations can be made directly to Ridgeland High School. Donations for the deadline is April 30. Folks, there's a lot of kids up at Ridgeland that won't walk across the stage because their folks can't afford cap and gowns. There's 100. And I think our community can come together and help these kids walk the stage. They have earned it and it's not their fault.
Where can the donations be made to, please?
They can be made to me. You can call me at 423-760-6555. I'll come get your money wherever you're at. I'll meet you. You can stop by Ridgeland High School and make your donation. Please, community, step up and help us get these 100 seniors across the stage. And I'm May, thank you.
How much are they?
I forget, I ain't got it. Seemed like the cap and gowns was 60, 50 bucks and whatnot. Make it out to Ridgeland High School. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Anyone else that would like to speak in the public comment section, please? Okay. Then we will move on to unfinished business, which is the first one is ordinance 0, I'm sorry, O-03-24 to amend the Chapter 6 Animal Code of the County Code for animal, the animal shelter and animal control. This item was tabled at the December meeting to allow our Animal Services Director time to provide input. No changes have been made to the document at this time. We do feel like that there might be some need for rewording, but also, there may be a need for time to allow the new spay and neuter voucher program to work. So, I'm going to open it up to the board and ask for your opinions. Any motions that would like to be made? Please speak now. Do I have a motion?
So, you think we need to table it for what period of time?
I didn't say, I didn't, well, it was tabled. I'm not suggesting you table it. I'm just saying.
I think it would be appropriate to call our director and talk to her about what she would like to change.
Do we have to make a motion first?
How long should?
Yeah, we do.
I'm making a motion that we table the.
We can.
At this point, no time limit on it so that we can discuss. I'll make a motion to table it.
So, we have a motion to be tabled till how long?
At this point, no time limit until we have definite answers.
We really need a time limit.
Six months?
Okay, six months.
Within six months.
All right, we have a motion on the table to table this for six months. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Is there a discussion now?
I would like to call our director up there.
All right. Is Bailey in the room? This will be Bailey Clements. I'll let her announce herself, but we appreciate that. Mr. Hart, you can ask any questions you may have when she gets up here. Hello.
Hello.
Please tell us who you are and what you do.
Bailey Clements, I'm the Director of Animal Services.
Do you want to go ahead and ask her questions now? Or ask your questions?
Yeah, because you worked on this somebody before you were gone for a while. And by the way, welcome back from Fort Jackson, South Carolina.
Thank you.
Through your training. So, and we've got a program in place where we're going to use some funds to help the public get their animals spayed and neutered. I was angry about that the other day and the county vet and some other folks. And that's really promising. So, as that progresses, and within six months, do you feel like you could put together something that better, more, show what you'd like for this to look like in the counties? Are six months enough time, I guess? I think it is.
I think it is. I think there's two sides to this ordinance that we've kind of discussed where we want to be able to offer resources to the pet owners that need help getting this done. It is expensive, we understand that. So, we want to be able to help. We also have the enforcement side of things as well as our capacity and budget at the shelter. A couple of numbers, for example, is that of, last year alone, we had 84 litters brought in. Those 84 litters were owner surrendered. We offered the resources to get them. Spay, neutered, helped them out. They didn't want to. Of the 84, I believe 21 were multiple litter people, where it was a constant. Our intake has risen in two years from about 1,500 to in 2024, almost 2,300. The litters, the habitual surrenders is hitting us hard. Just for us, we cannot adopt out an animal that is not spayed and neutered. So, these animals that are coming in must then fall on us in our budget to spay and neuter. We want to be proactive on that. We want to offer help, but we also have to have the ability to ensure that the owners are responsible. We're offering a lot of leeway. We understand that you have working dogs, you have hunting dogs, you have your protection, and you have breeders. As long as you're a licensed breeder, we're good with that. If you want your livestock guardians intact because that helps fulfill their job, we want that. What we want to eliminate is where we have animal control out after hours over 150 times in a year because animals are out running around, which is, you know, common for unaltered animals. Last year alone, we had 473 animals impounded from animal control. That's not including people bringing in to surrender. Of the animals, of that 473, over 350 were owned animals at large. 34 were able to be returned in the field. We have nothing where we can limit the animals coming into the shelter. I understand that there is some type of concern in regards to government overreach. I get that. But we are going to have government overreach in one of three ways. Unfortunately, we're going to have an ordinance where we can see a decline in the surrenders and intakes at the shelter. We're going to have an overreach where our budget is going to have to increase. We cannot continue with these numbers and keep up our daily functions. Or we're going to have to go backwards 10 years in animal welfare and start euthanizing numerous animals at a time. And I don't think we have a staff that really wants that option or is willing to do that option. So, what is the best way we can go about remedying this? This is the best solution. We have no intention of going to door by door by door and saying, do you have animals or are they spayed and neutered? Absolutely not, we don't have time for that. It would be like rabies where if we go out, you've got a violation. We're going to say, hey, this is the law, you made a law, don't it? We're going to give you a certain amount of time to get it done. If we get another call out there, now we are going to enforce it, right? We've already got multiple in court and I can get you those numbers where people are having animals spayed and neutered in lieu of fines. We don't want to come out and charge you $150 fine, $250 fine to have you back in court to pay it again when most of the time, spaying and neutering resolves the issue. So, we're just trying to look at what is best in both realms. I think the spay and neuter voucher program is phenomenal. There's no county around that there is offering that. We are the only one. But we also have to have some accountability for the people that, you know, are habitually violating the ordinances as well as, you know, constantly surrendering, surrendering, surrendering with no type of repercussion.
Plus, we don't know how long the donation fund will last for the freeze.
Yeah, it will not sustain if we don't have a way to sustain it.
That's a short.
Which it is a very short window. I did run the numbers and I can get them to y'all. I don't have them on me right now. But we obviously want to sustain that because there's so many people that do want to have them spayed and neutered. So, how can we help that? How can we also hold people accountable?
So, is the spay and neuter voucher program started yet? Or is it close to starting, it is starting?
We are, probably next week, actually. We already have vets on.
Next week, we have a list, we have some vets. We're waiting on one or two, I think.
So, we can go ahead and give vouchers out.
But we have, we've already got our list and we'll start working through that.
Did you just tell me that there's 181 people?
There's over, well, that was two days ago. Yeah, that was, we are now up over 200 people that are wanting to have this done.
And that's a great response.
It's phenomenal. It is phenomenal.
Sure, but in your best estimate, how many people will that help? The funds that we have in it, do you have an idea? You have 200 on the list, how many will that assist?
What do you mean, which would it?
So, if we have $60,000 in our account and each spay.
So, roughly, right now, with what's in the account, we could. So roughly, right now, with what's in the account, we could sustain that program at maximum for four months, which is where the other side comes into play with the licensing. If you do not come hell or high water, want to have your animal spayed and neutered, okay, here's a license. That cost from in here would come from whatever y'all, you know, were determined to go back into the fund to the community who does want to spay and neuter.
Good update.
So how are y'all, how are y'all awarding the vouchers? Is it like a lottery?
Right now, we have a waitlist.
Right.
We have everyone calling in one at a time.
Who's next, or is it just a lottery, like you're drawing out of a?
No, it's whoever's on the list.
Whoever's on, first come, first served.
How they sound?
And if one family has multiple dogs, they're getting, they, we're only allowing one of their pets at a time, and then we'll come back to them and get another pet and that kind of thing.
As we kind of develop it, and we are taking more information than just name, number, and what you need done, we're getting your number of pets, how many you have, their ages, everything like that. As ready to, well, to cultivate these statistics in the animals, there may be some that comes up where we have to change kind of that system, maybe go to a lottery. If we have someone that's more urgent, we, we would just have to see to figure that out. We feel like the fairness of it right now is from the moment it was announced. If you, you make the effort to call and get put on that list, then, then, you know, we're going to go that route.
And our, our visit with the vet that day helped a lot with our organization of the data that we want to collect. So I think we're starting off on a good foot, but we don't know where it's going to take us, so. I am proud that we are the only county that's doing that that we know of. We're using our donation money properly, so.
That is, that's, that's huge, even, even just for the staff that we have a county that, you know, we're willing to, to push that forward and try to help with one of the most expensive, you know, things of owning an animal. It's awesome to see. And the staff is very appreciative of the support of y'all and y'all's transparency in everything we've done and, and, you know, holding us all accountable as well. We couldn't brag on y'all more and your support.
Well, we appreciate y'all. Thank you so much. Does anybody have anything else for Bailey? Thank you for talking to me.
Appreciate you.
All right, so now that discussion's over, we need to vote on the ordinance. Oh, well, you, you made a, let me refer, let me remind everybody what Mr. Wilson was, his motion was to table it for six months. I had a second by Mr. Blake Moore. All in favor, say aye. Any nays? No. So it is unanimous we pass that we will wait six months and review, visit this again in October.
If she has a resolution for it, then we add up to six months, right?
No, a maximum of six months.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to the next purchase order, and it's still in unfinished business. Purchase order twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 nine two three for ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars to Estes Equipment Company for a fuel system upgrade for the County Public Works Department. This was tabled from the February sixth meeting and the March sixth meeting so that we could get other bids from similar companies. We only obtained one other bid out of four that were requested from four companies. The secondary bid received from First Choice for an estimated amount of eighty-five thousand zero sixty-nine and twenty-two cents. This is, this funding does come from the twenty twenty splashed, but of course, we do want to make sure that we are choosing a fiscally responsible choice. So currently, we have Estes Equipment in the ground. It is what we've been using for over twenty years. Does anyone want to ask Rick Carr, our director, to come up from the shop? Or if we are not having any questions for him, then I can ask for a motion.
I would like for Rick to explain the two quotes and the differences, please.
Mr. Carr, would you come forward? Thank you. Please tell us who you are and what you do.
I'm Rick Carr. I'm the shop manager.
Okay.
Now, what was your question, sir?
Well, we got two bids, and I asked you another price, and I'd like your recommendation and just some justification behind it.
My recommendation would be Estes, just simply for the fact that they know what's there, they've worked on it, they installed it. So I'm thinking less likely to have any surprises down the road from a company that's not familiar with what we have.
And you, you looked at those bids, and you feel like, I think you told me there was, there was some things you think maybe left off? Is that what you told me?
Yeah, on the second bid, they, they didn't quote the new chips and the new chip reader. They said the one that we have would, would, would work. But then again, it's, it's the same age as everything else.
And in Estes quote, they do include the new chip?
Yeah, everything, everything comes in.
Okay, so that, okay.
That was the biggest difference when calculating that one.
All right. And that was my question.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Carr? Thank you so much for your added information. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks for looking at it.
All right. Is there a motion from the board on which one to, which bid to accept?
I, I would make a motion to, to accept the one that the shop manager recommended. He works with them every day, and there, there are a little bit of differences in quotes because of the chip reader. So based on Rick's recommendation, I would recommend to take the bid from Estes.
Okay, Mr. Hart has recommended the bid be given to Estes Equipment. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Blake Moore. Is there any further discussion needed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, unanimous that we will go with Estes Equipment on this bid. Thank you. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. This is a special, the consent agenda is a special rule of order providing for non-controversial matters to be considered in gross or without debate or amendment. Should a board member object to any of the items in the consent agenda, it can be taken out of the consent agenda and restored as a regular agenda item. This is, like I said, a new component to our, to our agenda in an effort to try to add efficiencies. So we don't have to talk about each separate item under this. And these items happen to be all policies for the state, for the county employees. So the board, we're, we're giving this, these policies a week ago, and I've discussed them with anyone that has asked me questions. And I have worked with the HR director, who actually wrote these, to tweak them and make sure that they are fitting for our employee group, and they are. So I would like to ask, well, you know what? I'll make the motion that we approve all three policies for our county employees. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Askew. Is there any discussion? Any, any discussion at all?
No, ma'am, I'll read over. I'm, I'm good.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? It is unanimous. All three policies are approved. Thank you. All right. Now, under new business, Resolution R dash zero two five dash two five, to amend the fiscal twenty twenty-five county budget. And I would like to hold for just a moment, if the board will allow me, to have Mr. Askew return, because this is an important matter that we need to have everybody present.
Bless you.
Okay, let's resume. Our Finance Department has recommended we make these modifications to the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to allocating funding that in many cases was previously approved and just not added to the budget. So what that means is the, in the prior months, there were resolutions, there were improvements from the, by this board that were monetary in, in respect. And they approved it, but it never made it to the Finance Department to actually move the money to the right place. So this is moving a large amount of money to the right place in our budget. Again, the board has had this, this list for a week, and we've talked, I've talked to several of them that have questions. I believe that maybe they've even asked our CFO, Angela Butner, about some things. She is here, I believe. I don't see her, but I think she's here. Yeah, there she is. If you have any questions about this, after we put it to a vote, we'll, we'll bring her up and ask questions. There are things on here like the health expense, technical contractual services, rental for land and buildings, repairs, reimbursement, salary and wages, and some of these are new things, too, that are, have just occurred recently. There's a social security contribution that needs to be shored up. There's a Medicare contribution that needs to be shored up. So I will, with that, you can read it, you've read it already. Is there a motion from the board about this amendment? Let me say one thing, I apologize. Let me say out loud how much it is. The total amendment, the budget amendment, is eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and ninety-three, sorry, eight, sixty-five ninety-three. That's the amount that's being amended to our budget. It's this amount right here. Oh, okay.
Yeah, this, this one did have all the fire trucks.
Oh, the fire trucks, right. I apologize. May I use yours for a second? I did have an old copy. The, the actual true budget amendment amount is one million, fifteen thousand, ninety-three dollars. Okay, thank you very much. So now, do I have a motion on the floor so we can bring it to discussion?
I'd motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Do I second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Askew. Now, is there a discussion, please?
So, so the one million dollars is, is there. It's not an increase, it's just being moved in accounts, because the money's being moved, you have to have a resolution for it.
For the most part, there's one part where there's a salary and wages, is the thirty thousand dollars is, is a consultation fee to keep our, our prior CFO helping our current CFO learn what she needs to learn. So that's, that's a new item. But the rest of it.
But other than that thirty thousand, the money's just being.
That's correct.
Reallocated, it's not.
That's correct.
That's what I understood from Joe, too. Okay. Okay, that's my question.
Oh, and the, the Chautauqua County fifteen thousand is new, too. Which we're going to talk about that in a minute. But that's the water line that we're helping Chautauqua County with. That's a new item, fifteen thousand.
Is that out here later, or we got to press?
We do have to vote on that later. That's right.
It's ahead of me. We're leaving now.
Okay, that was my question.
So if y'all would like to come back to this after we talk about Chautauqua County, we can, because it's on here to be approved. We haven't talked about it.
If we can, we can go ahead and.
I'll have to close, I'll have to close this and open the other resolution, but I can go to that one if I need to.
Whatever you want to.
I think that's the better way to do it, because we can't really approve something we haven't really talked about yet.
Is that resolution over?
I didn't think it was for fifteen, was it?
We did not think there's a resolution for Chautauqua County. It's, it's, there's not, it'll just, it's under the spin.
Oh, we didn't have it as a resolution.
No, fifteen thousand. Yeah, it's under. Right. See, it's just.
Oh, I thought, no, we didn't, we did not have that for this. We talked about this. Right, okay, my bad. We don't have to have, we don't have to have it as a resolution.
So, so just to clarify, since we're still in discussion, the thirty thousand's additional?
Yes.
The fifteen thousand's additional?
Yes. So forty-five, oh, thank you, Angela. Please come up, please come up here.
She'll come straighten us out.
Yeah, straighten me out, thank you.
Now, I want to clarify.
Tell me your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Angela Butner.
Thank you.
And I wanted to clarify that the, these are all additions to the budget this year. So this is, this is stuff that, like the Adventure Project and the playground expansion, that kind of stuff that y'all have already made resolutions approving. But when, it did not get into the budget when y'all approved the budget this year. So it actually has to be added to the budget. So they are actual additions, all of them.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
That's the, that's the financial lingo. You're better than me.
Yes.
Okay. So it was approved, most of this was approved prior, but it's never put into the budget as a budget item?
Yes, though the largest one was the Adventure Acre Project. It was five hundred thousand, that was originally approved by y'all to be in the budget.
That was the master grant.
Yeah, that's, that was with the grant, and it did not get added as an amendment on there. And then we've had two years that the budget has passed that it was overlooked, that that was not in there. So since the budget is the legal binding agreement, we have to have y'all amend the budget in order for me to add it back in because it's been approved twice without it in there.
So the twenty twenty-four budget will increase one million, fifteen thousand, ninety-three dollars.
The twenty-five will, yes.
Oh, twenty-five.
Yeah, we're in twenty-five.
Well, we're in there.
Yeah, that's what we're in now. Yeah, that's all right.
But, but for the most part, these items were not transferred to next year's budget because they're one-time expenditures for the most part. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
You mean, will we spend the money this year?
In other words, this is an additional million dollars to our budget this year, but most of this money should not transfer to next year.
Oh, right.
Because it won't be an additional budget item every year.
No, it's not increasing the budget for next year.
Right, it's just stuff that we allocated that we didn't transfer the money for. I understand.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I got it. Okay. Thank you, Angela.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you for being here tonight. All right, so we have a motion to approve, or do we have, we're in discussion.
We have a motion to second.
Y'all confused me now.
Yeah.
So we have a second from Mr. Askew. All right, so is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, the motion to amend the budget is approved. Thank you for that healthy discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now let me find my, where am I? Listen, we're under new business. We are doing, okay, we're doing the, next one is Resolution R dash zero two six dash two five, to participate in the Georgia Department of Transportation local bridge replacement program for East Armurchie Road over East Armurchie Creek.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to recuse my.
You said it right.
Did I say it right? Because I have property on both sides of the.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. This program provides replacement of local bridges when the locality is willing to cover right way, right-of-way acquisition. This bridge was built in nineteen seventy-three and has load restrictions due to concrete deterioration. This project will cost the county fifty thousand dollars and would be funded in the state's FY twenty twenty-seven budget. This is about a eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar project. The bridge will be raised three feet, lanes will be widened, and there will be a bicycle shoulder added. So the state will be paying out eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and the county will be paying out fifty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Blake Moore, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion on this matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, the motion passes that we will spend fifty thousand dollars to help repair the East Armurchie Road Bridge. Thank you. Resolution R dash zero-two-seven dash two-five to appoint Randy Pittman as Chair of the Walker County Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's Chair, Michael Haney, recently resigned. I'd like to thank him for his long years of service, and he did a fine job on that commission. And now it's time to replace him with a new party. And Randy Pittman is the current Vice Chair, and we appreciate him serving in that capacity as well. Now he's offered to step up into the chairman's role. Do I have a motion on the floor either way?
Motion to appoint Mr. Pittman.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Blake Moore. Any discussion about the matter?
I would just like to tell them, thank him for his service. I don't know anybody more deserving and more hardworking for the service in Walker County.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, and Mr. Randy Pittman is now the Chairman of the Planning Commission. Thank you for being, your service, thank you for offering your service. Resolution R dash zero-two-eight dash two-five, the authorization of issuance of a purchase order for new dump trucks for the Walker County Public Works Department. This is coming from the 2020 Splotched Funding, not out of the general fund. The Public Works Department would like to add two new dump trucks to their fleet to reduce the use of some of their aging equipment. We received three quotes covering the three different kinds of trucks. Do I have a motion so that we can get to the discussion? The motion to move it forward.
Motion to move forward to discussion?
No, you have to approve, approve the purchases of dump trucks or deny it?
On motion to approve the purchase of one of the three types of dump trucks.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, now let's have a discussion, if you'd like. Who would like to start?
I'll like, I think, did Carolyn put these bids together?
I think it was. Or, I think it was a.
Could you come discuss these three trucks, Carolyn, and make your recommendation?
Tell us who you are and what you do for the county, please.
Carolyn Bowers, Walker County Public Works Director. We've got three quotes, one for this Mahon Truck Centers, and the Pete Store in Ringgold, and National Truck Center. One is for Kenworth Tandem Maxels. It's one eighty-seven, three ninety-two apiece per truck. The Peterbilt trucks are one hundred and eighty-five thousand per truck. Both of these are Class Sevens. The trucks that we currently have are sixes, they're twenty years old. These are a step up from what we got. The quote for the Mahon, Mahon Truck Center, those are Mack granites, I don't know a whole lot about those. They're two thirty-four, eight seventy-sixer truck. The Kenworths are about sixteen-week lead time for bed builds. The Peterbilts, we can have in two days.
Would anyone like to ask, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Would anyone like to ask Carolyn any questions?
Dump trucks are twenty years old, but how many miles are on them?
Mileage, I think they're.
What we, Bobby?
One eighty to one ninety thousand.
Hundred and eighty, hundred and ninety thousand miles.
And they won't even hardly pull, look at them now.
It's pretty tough on them. Yeah, they are about a, they are about a three hundred, three hundred horsepower truck. When they were, they were fifty-three thousand pound trucks, Class Sevens. Yeah, they're, they're pretty weak. These other ones are, they're about ten, I'm sorry, fifty more horsepower than the ones we got, and are a little bigger.
So out of these three, which ones you recommend?
I'm going to recommend the Pete's, because I know we can get those in two days.
Are the warranties on them about the same?
Yes.
But the Peterbilts do not have high lift gates, correct?
Correct. Yeah, they're standard gate.
And the Macks are on the lot, and they have high lift gates, which would be good for tornadoes, brush removal, all-around truck. I drove the Kenworths the county has for several miles, and I drove a Mack truck just like those spec, just like those. I've drove probably five new ones and put two to three hundred thousand miles on them, and they didn't broke in. And these trucks are twenty years old and got a hundred and eighty, ninety thousand horsepower. Yeah, the Mack costs more money, but I mean, do you want a truck that's going to last? Or do you want one you're going to have to replace and then it broke in, in my opinion?
What are the warranties on these trucks? I know the Mack had what, what an extended warranty in that price for.
I don't know anything about the Macks, I didn't quote them.
I hear it's something about two hundred and fifty.
What are the warranties on the Peterbilts and Kenworths?
They are, it is highlighted.
It's in there.
Yeah, it's highlighted on, towards the back of the spec sheets.
It don't matter to me which truck, but I'm going to ask the board to highly think about the high lift gate.
When we make a motion, you can make that motion. We're, I mean, when we, when you vote, we'll do, that's when we do it. Okay, what else, discussion?
So the trucks you have now are Class Sevens, all either Class Sevens, right?
Correct, the Macks are eights.
So it is more truck, is it a hundred thousand dollars more? I don't know, that's a lot of money to me.
I think one of my only main concerns is, we've talked about several times, is the gate, you know, that being able to use it for multipurpose, and that's one thing that I, I do, having been involved and been around a long time, as you have, there's always times that we need.
More is a want than a need.
No, no, sir, it's not. If we're going to spend the money for the trucks, they need to be able to use, be able to use whatever our uses are, whether it be haul and gravel, asphalt, brush, a dead animal, or debris, whatever. So it's not really a want, it's if we're going to buy them, the more multi-use we can get out of them, I think it's a, in my opinion, it's a better use of our money if we get more uses out of the piece of equipment. And that's, you know, that's the bottom line, is the way I look at it, is, you know, well, if we can't use those, the other type of beds but for like a gravel or asphalt truck, then we're limited to the use of. If we can't reach or load, and I think that's what the whole conversation's been about, about loading, or being able to get in, get the gates in or off, or get the brush in and out.
It's not a big deal.
It's not a big deal.
Well, I think what we have on the table right now is the motion to buy them. So let's, let's agree that we're, or not agree, let's vote on whether we're going to buy them. Let's do that, let's clear that out, then we can have another motion on which ones to buy. Fair enough? Okay, so do I have a motion? No, we had a motion from Mr. Hart, sorry. All in favor of purchasing new dump trucks, not which ones yet, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it's unanimous that we are going to purchase new dump trucks. Now, do I have a motion on the floor, which two new dump trucks to purchase?
I'll make a motion to purchase the Mack trucks, based on my research with other trucking companies on what we're pricing here, because we're not pricing apples to apples. We've got apples versus oranges, because two of these trucks are medium-duty trucks, the Mack trucks are heavy-duty. If we're going to spend the money, we don't need to be spending the money again in ten to fifteen years buying, even though that hundred thousand dollars, we're going to spend it now, but we're going to save it later.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
You are aware of these tri-axle trucks.
But they're on the lot, too.
Discussion is over, sorry. I've got to put it to, put it to bed. All in.
We haven't discussed this vote yet. We got a motion to a second, right?
Yeah, yeah, we can discuss this.
Oh, we can, that's right. Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Yeah, so I understand what you're saying, but the Class Sevens are a step above the Class Sevens that we currently have, and it's a hundred thousand dollars, so.
Medium-duty versus heavy-duty, and if they, if we're replacing them in two, I don't know. I just researched and talked to other trucking companies about what we were looking at, because I'm not in the trucking business. And when I went to research with other companies to say, hey, what do y'all run? I mean, we do have a lot of mountains, hills, and if you load it down with brush, and the high lift gates are recommended from every trucking company I've talked to.
And so that's the thing about, yeah, we lay the tailgate down. When you lay the tailgate down, that takes the pins out of the top of the bed, which springs the bed, for number one. For number two, if we're going to put a ordinance in place for people to secure their load, we're laying a tailgate down and craps falling out, do you want it to fall off during the walk?
I'm not discussing the tailgate, I'm talking about the truck. We can put the tailgates on the Peterbilt trucks. That's, I got no problem with the tailgate.
All right, Brian, are you going to buy a fifteen-hundred pickup to pull your cow trailer load of cows?
No, but my, I guess my question was, if we've been running Class Six trucks, we're stepping up to Class Seven trucks.
But these guys, and I'm guilty, everyone I said, "County, we go to the quarry and get twenty-two tons." No, it's not legal, but no, the truck can't handle it either. So if you don't buy the heavy-duty truck, you're still going to overload the weight. And you can take the tri-axle out and sell it, it's brand new, it ain't been used, and there's people out there that'll jerk around. But the road department, these trucks, these are heavy-duty trucks, and they're valuable. As simple as taking bolts out and plugging airlines, simple.
Is there any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'd like to know, we've talked about Class Six, Class Seven, Class Eight. Carolyn, what's the ballpark difference in a Six, a Seven, and an Eight? Somebody, I want to just, a ballpark of lengths terms?
A sixty-thousand-pound truck compared to a sixty-six-thousand-pound truck.
And then when you go to the heavy-duty, what's the difference there?
Just about six thousand pounds, not a lot. Front ends are a little different. I don't know what motors are in these, I don't, I don't have a spec sheet on them, so.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion by Mr. Wilson to purchase two Mack dump trucks. We have a second by Mr. Blake Moore. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Then the motion passes to buy two Mack dump trucks. Carolyn, thank you for your input, we appreciate it. All right, Resolution R dash zero-two-nine dash two-five to award a contract for Walker Rocks Park Phase Three Playground. The playground expansion, this is a board previously, this board previously approved the application for an acceptance of a Land and Water Conservation Grant. This is the first of two projects that are part of that grant. This covers a playground expansion at Walker Rocks, which is at Civic Center, the park there. There are two options before you, the only difference is one playground piece. The option one has a smaller footprint and contains a SWURV called Swerve, which spins and can hold roughly three people. Option two is more fun, because it has a larger footprint, and it contains a swirl instead of a swerve, which is like a merry-go-round and can hold five to eight people. The board received plenty of documentation on this and pictures added. So do we want to make a motion so that we can have discussion, please?
Make a motion that we accept the swirl.
Swirl, okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Who, do I have a second?
I think that's the right one.
Second.
Mr. Blake Moore seconds the swirl choice, and the discussion, please.
So in the budget amendment that we voted on, that's what, that's what, at the bottom of that.
That's right.
We planned for that money for that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I remember talking to Joe about that, I'm good.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, let's do a vote. All in favor to accept the swirl as the option, as option two for a larger footprint for the park? Do I have a motion to accept it? Oh, sorry.
I made a motion.
And Blake Moore said, I'm sorry. It's getting late in the evening. So all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, unanimously passes, the swirl is the option that we are choosing. Thank you. And the second, the next one is also regarding the park. Resolution R dash zero-three-zero dash two-five to award a contract for Walker Rocks Park Phase Three Pickleball Courts. This is the second project that is part of the Land and Water Conservation Grant. We bid this out as two pickleball courts, which was part of the grant, but we have included options to expand the project, to add two more, to make four pickleball courts, and add lights. The additional courts and lights means that the county will need to provide additional funding. The public outcry for pickleball courts is very extreme, and they want to be outside, and we want to get them outside. So we feel like two pickleball courts is not enough. Four is really not enough, but that's really all we can afford. So having lights allows people to play longer and, every day. So can I, can I get a motion to approve the four, the additional two courts and lights, or to deny it? I have a motion.
Motion.
To.
Approve.
Thank you, Mr. Blake Moore. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion needed on this topic?
So these are funds also adjusted for on a budget amendment, correct?
That's correct. Just as Angela had told us before.
No, I'm good.
All right, so no other further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And so passed that we will add two additional pickleball courts and lights. Purchase order two oh-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one-one-zero-eight for forty-six, forty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for a 2024 hydrocedar purchased from Dobbs Equipment for the landfill. Mr. Payne, would you mind to come back up and tell us about the hydrocedar, please? Thank you. This is a one-year-old hydrocedar, and it comes, it will be paid for if approved from the 2020 Splotched. So again, you are.
I'm Payne Gilli with the Walker County Landfill.
Sanitation and Environmental Management.
Director of Environment. Solid waste and environmental management.
I got it right that time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, this is for a hydrocedar for the landfill equipment. Now, this is, this is not just a spur-of-the-moment purchase, this is something that's been going, this is a project we've been working on since 2023. We were directed by the Georgia EPD to groom our slopes, clean our slopes, and grass our slopes since we're not proceeding with the development of the Site Two Construction and Demolition Landfill. So part of that, the initial approach was to obtain bids from various contractors in the area to do the job. So we prepared a scope of work, and Items Five and Six out of Seven were to spread at least four inches of organic soil mix on the graded slopes, and then Item Six, so fast-growing seed, and spread and secure straw mats over the seeded areas. So when we started looking at the results of the bids, we were really pretty amazed, because they ranged anywhere from, just Items Five and Six, forty-nine thousand dollars to do, a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to do, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, plus some change, forty-four thousand to do. The best price that we got was a twenty-nine or thirty-thousand-dollar price. Actually, when you look at the current acreage we need to hydroseed, we're at about thirty-one thousand dollars with that group. When I first talked with that group, they said, well, we can do that for about six thousand dollars. So I'm like, okay, we're in. And then when I get the actual bid from them, you know, we were at twenty-nine thousand dollars. So when we started looking at all these costs, and the fact that the decision was made for us to do the work, we thought, well, this would be a good purchase for us, because we have leachate breakouts that we have to repair from time to time. We have slopes we've got to maintain. We've got other, other projects in the county that could utilize this machine. The landfill used to have a hydrocedar in the past, but I guess back in 2017, they got rid of it. But, so this is to kind of replace a piece of equipment that we used to have, but also something that we could take, we could use, but also if other departments in the county could use it, it's available to them, like stormwater work, the industrial site, seeding and grassing there, ditch work, things like that. So we looked around, and really, we tried to rent one for our work. And I started looking in probably June, May, late May or June, and we couldn't locate one until October. And even then, the company had to go two states to pick it up out of another rental region and bring it to us to use. So these hydrocedars are not something you can go down to the local rental store and pick up, they're scarce. And when people rent them, they keep them on their jobs for long periods of time. We were actually waiting for two jobs, and one in Knoxville, one in Nashville, to finish so that we could get the hydrocedar. And they never, they never turned it over. When we finally got the rental unit, it was just worn out from being rented all the time. And, you know, it lasted about a day and a half before it broke down. So we're under a timeline with EPD to get this work done. This piece of equipment, it's not, it's a seasonal purchase, not a perennial purchase. It's not something that we would use all year round. But during the time that we could use it, we will put it to use, and then it would also be available for other departments to kind of cross over into. And then it would also be available for other departments to kind of cross over into, uh, other, other projects in the county.
This twenty-twenty-four, is it, is it a used piece of equipment or just a new?
It's new, it's new. It's new, yeah. Actually, this, this came out, um, let's see. When they quoted, it was a twenty, back in twenty-twenty-four when they originally quoted. Uh, but the twenty, it's a new model. It just came from the factory.
Oh, yeah, see, November twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah. So, it's, uh, um, it's, uh, it's available and we're eager.
Six hundred gallons.
Yes, sir.
With a gas cover mode.
And it has a, um, has a platform on it with a roll-up reeled hose along with a, um, a nozzle, a mounted nozzle. We've actually, you know, we tried this model out on, for the day that we had one, uh, and it did a great job, fine job for us. Lots of good coverage. And something like this is needed because the organic soil that we have, the soil that we have out there, and again, we were supplying organics and, and cover material to these, to these companies. The dirt, the soil wasn't, wasn't included in the, in the bid. But we had the, with Mr. Hart's recommendation, we had the extension agent come out and, and take a look at the soil and take some samples. And, you know, he's like, uh, it's gonna be a tough row to hoe, boys. This soil is not the best in the world. So, with this hydrocedar, we can apply a, a, a nutrient, we can fertilizer, we can apply a tacky mat that will stick to the soil and the seed at the same time. And it makes it, uh, makes it very, very useful for the type of soil that we have at the landfill.
Any other discussion or questions for Mr. Gilli?
So, I just, something I hadn't thought of, and you mentioned it, talking about the leachate breakouts. How often, how often do we, does that occur in a year?
Uh, it's, it's.
I mean.
Anytime. We have some right now we need to fix, yeah.
So, I mean, it's continual?
Oh, yeah, it's ongoing.
So, that will be a continual use, a year-round use?
Yeah.
If, if that were, I just, I'm just trying to see, because you're familiar with that. I'm not as familiar with it, but I do know what that is.
Yeah, breakouts occur at any time.
Mr. Hart, did you have something else?
Yeah, so, if purchased, when, when would you use it to sew the top of that lamp in that needs sewn, all those open slopes?
When would we use it?
Would you try to sew this spring or wait till fall?
Oh, we'd try to sew the spring, yeah. We've got an inspection coming up. I want to be ready for it, yeah.
And ne- next month, we have to make a decision on the rental of that D four, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
And about, how much is that money gonna be?
Two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, thereabouts.
And that's after we take off the rent, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further discussion?
No ma'am.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Did you say something?
I was asking Mr. Hart about the two twenty-nine. Was that something done last year?
Yeah, we, we released with the option to purchase.
Yeah, I've actually got them working on that number. I mean, what would the, the payoff be at that time? You know, during the next, the next meeting, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli.
Okay, you are.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll make a second.
Thank you, Mr. Askew. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Two, eh, two, what, someone's gotta vote.
We just did all ayes.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry, okay. So Eric, so once again, did everybody say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all ayes, sorry, thank you. So, it's a unanimous approval to buy the hydrocedar? Thank y'all. My ears must be getting tired too. All right. Let's see. All right, purchase order twenty-twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one-three-four-four for thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for installation of a firewall at the forthcoming Walker County Board of Elections building. Before we can move forward with the transition of the old Family Dollar building becoming the new Elections Building, it is required to have a firewall in it before any further development can happen. So, we got two bids for this wall. One from RT Newby at thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And the second one from Mason Reef Specialist for thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seven and fifty-three cents. The board has this in their packet. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve. Mr. Newby's bid.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, for Mr. Newby's thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollar fifty bid. Is there a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion?
Is it a concrete wall or?
It's a concrete, yeah, it's block wall.
Maybe it's block wall, a hundred and twenty feet long and sixteen feet tall. I'm assuming it's in the?
Backside.
Backside just to?
Yes, and it's to protect the voting machines and all the government equipment that's back there.
Will it have a ceiling in it too or just are the walls?
Oh, no, it's all the way up.
Yeah, the wall.
It goes all the way up. There are emergency exits on both ends of that room. So, if anybody happens to be in that room when fire does break out, they can get out. So, our fire marshal has made sure that we are gonna be safe in that room.
And is, is that a, is that a state requirement on the, the fire, having that fire protection around the weapons machines?
What that is?
It's a code requirement to have them?
Is it state or?
That's a fire code. Okay, okay, that's what, that's what I was trying to get at, thank you.
Because of the voting machines? Okay. Okay.
These machines, isn't it?
They will be. Okay, so we have a first and a second to approve RT Newby's. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And any nays? All right, it's unanimous that we will go with RT Newby's firewall construction in the new Elections Office Building. All right, just a few more to go. Purchase order twenty-twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one-three-five-eight for thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars for capital building improvements for siding replacement on the Walker County Health Department Building. We got two bids on this as well. And the board has reviewed the tape and cold paper bid for forty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and five cents and the M and W bid for the thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. So, do I have a motion on the floor? And what, which, what's your pleasure?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the M and W bid.
Thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine thousand eight hundred.
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Hart and Mr. Askew. Is there any discussion about this? Any further discussion? All, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, it is unanimous that we will go with M and W on the siding bid. Okay, now on to our last thing, which is the hearing for the three properties that we discussed earlier today. The first one was for Mr. Murdock. And I'll remind everybody what's, what's going on with this one. Request, Mr. Murdock, uh, sorry, Raymond Keith Murdock requests a variance for less than five acres in an A-one agriculture zone for property located at six-four-three Kensington Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, three oh-seven oh-seven. Tax map and parcel number zero dash two-eight-two dash zero-zero-nine. Does anyone need to talk to Mr. Persley about this? Cause, is he here?
Yeah, can we get him?
John, would you come up, please? We'll let Mr. Persley announce himself and if you'll stay for all three of these, that would be helpful.
Okay, yeah, I'm John Persley, I'm Planning Director in Stormwater LIA for Walker County.
Thank you. All right, so Mr. Murdock, um, can you give us a little background of what the Planning Commission?
Yeah, based on his, based on his property size, he has plenty of acreage to build a, a second dwelling or chop out five acres to be in compliance with the A-one zoning that he's currently in. What he's wanting to do is a variance to reduce the, the size to put a second dwelling, but he has the property to do that on without needing a variance, more or less.
Okay, so the Planning Commission denied that because he has other options?
That's right, and based on it does not meet the comprehensive plan, joint comprehensive plan that we govern by or, you know, look at, so that is correct. So, we did speak with him. I think his, uh, his plans are now to build a second dwelling and, and not full with getting it surveyed or second partial on that property.
Okay, do I have a motion from the board then on this property variance request?
The Planning Commission's motion was to deny?
Yes, sir.
Motion that we follow the Planning Commission's recommendation on this one and deny the, uh, variance. So.
All right, Mr. Askew had a first and to deny and Mr. Blakemore had a second. Is there any discussions? All in favor to deny the variance, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? This variance is denied. The second one is Mr. Michael Metzen. I'll remind you about this one too. Request a variance for less than five acres in an A-one agriculture zone. Property located at thirteen oh-seven Lee Mason Road, Lafette, Georgia, three oh-seven-two-eight. Tax map and parcel number zero dash five-one-four dash zero-one-one. Mr. Persley, would you, tell us what the commission did on this one?
Yeah, so, excuse me, originally he was asking for a half acre when he had come in. We explained that, um, you know, one acre does meet our comprehensive plan. Um, and so, um, at the meeting, we explained that to him. He was willing to, uh, put one acre for his partial or to split that off. Um, it does meet our comprehensive plan for rural residential, one to five acre lots is how our comprehensive plan reads. At that point, he was willing to do that. We had a mixed vote. We had a few, um, deny and a few approve. This, even though, um, he was willing to go and move it to the one acre. And, and so the, the recommendation was to deny it, um, even though it does meet the comprehensive plan. There was some discussion after that of the comprehensive plan and maybe a little bit of a lack of knowledge, um, from others on understanding the comprehensive plan and how it reads. And so, that, the recommendation based on that was to deny.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve.
Was a one acre variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Because it makes a comprehensive.
To Mr. Blakemore's request that we allow a one acre variance. And Mr. Wilson seconded. Any discussions, any more discussions about this?
So, how to, I mean, in the paperwork, was it revised to one acre or how, how does that, does it just go in our meetings?
Yeah, so, even in the meeting, it was, uh, you can amend it to recommend that. So, that was prior to the vote, uh, with the one acre track. We did not vote on it based on the half acre. The vote was taken on the one acre even though it does meet our joint comprehensive plan.
So, we are voting on the one acre?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
All right, so we have a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor to allow Mr. Metzen to have the one acre variance, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? So passed, Mr. Metzen is allowed to do what he wants to do? Thank you for waiting for, for us to get to that. Then one more, uh, Safe Future Real Estate Investments LLC requests three lot size variances for properties located at twenty and thirty-six and eighty-six Braxton Lane in Rossville, Georgia, three oh-seven-four. More? Mr. Persley, give us the camp.
Yeah, so, in, in the past, we've gave several variances for this property and, and reduced the lot sizes from fifteen thousand square feet is what they're currently wanting to do down to, I think it's ten thousand eight hundred and twenty, um, square feet. And so, um, they voted to, to deny his request based on, um, the, the lot sizes. It does meet the comprehensive plan for that area, um, high-density residential dwellings. But, um, the lot layout and the access to it, um, it is on sewer, so he has done the infrastructure to accommodate, um, high-density building. But just based on, uh, the density and the prior zoning, they chose to deny. The recommendation was to deny.
So, what he is wanting to do fits the plan?
Yes, sir.
And we had, we, we did give a variance prior for the lot size, so they've been reduced more.
Yeah, so the building that he's wanting to do does meet the joint comprehensive plan. The lot sizes do not meet our county ordinance for lot sizes. You have to have fifteen thousand square feet for a residential dwelling. And so, the building aspect of it, yes, meets, uh, the joint comprehensive plan for that area in the county. But the lot sizes he's asking for, the variance does not, which he's going from fifteen thousand down to, I believe it's ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-ish square feet.
So, they're cutting it by a third, basically.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
What are the lot sizes around it? Are they even the fifteen hundred?
Yeah, most of the lot sizes are probably even bigger. They're, on that road that he's coming off of is more of a, older neighborhoods. I want to say half acre to three acre to, um, probably twenty thousand square foot lots in that area. But, um, Claire Street is where the access is coming off of. So, I think they want to bring a second entrance in, um, off the top road there. So, um, it's, it's a weird development. Uh, we've gave several variances for the front part. He has done the infrastructure to accommodate that and it currently meets the requirement for lot sizes. But now he's wanting to reduce that even further.
How many lots he want, three?
I think he's wanting to, uh, the variance on those, yes. On those three. Now, in the front there, I think there's already, I want to say there's seven. Could be seven or nine. I, I forget the exact number, to be honest with you. But I think we've, we've done several variances, uh, in the past. He's, uh, has some triplexes and duplexes in the front there.
It's this right here. Those in the front right there.
Yeah, so some of the challenges he was facing before was the partial, number of parcels on a private drive. And so, he did accommodate that. I think he's recently sold the back property off. And so, that's where they're coming, asking for a variance to, to the people that he has, Carter has sold to. And so, he did accommodate the private drive requirements, um, and that was one of the challenges prior.
All right, let's take it to a motion. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to deny based on the recommendation of the Planning Zoning Board.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that based on the recommendation of the Planning Zoning Board as well.
Is there any other discussion? All right, all in favor to deny this variance, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, the ayes have it. This is denied, as said. Okay, thank you, Mr. Persley. Okay, now we're at Commissioner comments. You can leave if you want to. Okay, good, okay, good. Say that again?
It'll be a contract with the head.
Uh, Mr. Blakemore, would you like to go first in comments?
Just appreciate our coming out, getting involved. Uh, appreciate all of our employees and the hard work that they do every day to keep the county running. If I can help, call, text, or email, thank you.
Mr. Askew?
Yes, uh, thanks to, uh, like I said, all of our department's, uh, employees. They have been out there getting it hard. I do appreciate, as I say every time, I appreciate the input, whether we agree or disagree. That's what we're here for, to come in and, and talk about it and, and make some decisions on what's best for the, for the majority of the county. So, I do appreciate that. I do want to give a hats off to the, uh, the, uh, Operation Outreach and the litter pickup. Uh, even, like I said, that was a, an amazing couple of, showed what could happen in a couple of hours with a handful of folks. Uh, Robbie, like I said, thank you for taking your, the, your crew down. And, and that was, that just shows if we do get involved, and I will challenge again to, to anybody to, you know, put, put your labor where your mouth is and let's, let's come together as a team. Because that was just, how, how many volunteers probably did you have on that? Ten, ten, fifteen maybe?
We had about twenty.
About twenty? And so, twenty in, in two hours, two thousand pounds. If we can organize those kind of things and get more involvement, well, that, that's, that's phenomenal, so I want.
Majority of them were ladies too.
Anyway, that, that's all I have. Thank y'all.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, uh, we recognize the first responders at the beginning of our meeting or nine-one-one operators, that that's somebody who doesn't get a lot of recognition sometimes. When you dial the number, they answer the phone, so glad to have them there. Also, looking forward to working with Bailey and her team on this new animal ordinance.
Yes.
Also, like I say, Bailey lost her dad who was kind of a, a real positive influence on our community for many years.
An icon.
He was, he really was, so we'll miss Pat. But, uh, just wanted to recognize him and everything he did for the county.
Yeah, thanks to, uh, uh, echo those comments about the nine-one-one operators. If you don't know them personally and know what they go through and some of the calls they get, it, it's rough. I do know.
I do know one of them personally and some of the calls that she's received, because they may be sitting there and get calls with their family. It's pretty rough, so they, they do have a tough job to go unrecognized. Also, thank you all of our county employees. Also, beginning April seventh, the Northwest Georgia, they're going to start dropping oral rabies vaccines, uh, from planes, helicopters. They're, they're safe for your pets, but if you see them, leave them laying, uh, just remember that, that's going to start on the seventh, so.
Do we have any motion or necessary for executive session? All right, then I'm going to say that we are adjourned and thank you very much for coming tonight. What, what did you wrong?
Motion to.
No, I don't have to. I can say, I can adjourn us without it.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, though.